I'm not going to knock on my door.
I agree.
You ready for tonight's meeting, Vice Mayor?
Love it, love it. How about yourself? I wish I can, but I just coughed my mouth.
One minute, one minute.
Just there?
Call the meeting in order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Buckner?
Here.
Kevin Campbell?
Here.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Here.
Dr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Shanks?
Here.
Mr. Vogler?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance to the flag led by Councilman Fred Shanks.
Please pray these three requests with me this evening. Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance and wisdom this evening and the days to come as we deliberate the future of our city and our region. Second, we ask that you teach, touch, and heal those who are sad and lost. We ask that you give encouragement and opportunity to those who seek it. And we ask that you help those who are lost to turn their backs on despair and evil and to seek your God-given opportunities. Third, Father, we pray for peace and well-being. We especially pray for the safety of those that protect us on our streets and in our city. Please also look over those who protect our freedom, both here at home and abroad, as well as their families. We give you thanks for this nation we live in and pray that you show all of us how to cherish the opportunity you have given each and every one of us. We pray all this, drawing on your love. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask Mr. Ken Gilli of the Motorcycle Rider Training Program, Danville Community College, to please come forward. Proclamation. Whereas scooters and motorcycles are competitively, are compared, use comparatively less fuel, cause less pollution, pollution, and have less harmful impact on our infrastructure. And whereas scooters and motorcycles require only a fraction of space taken by other vehicles to park, thereby addressing an ongoing shortage in our city. And whereas the use of fossil fuels continues to damage our health by adding to pollution and risking our future through global warming. And whereas our infrastructure repairs fail to keep pace with its degradation, degradation. And whereas, for these reasons, scooters and motorcycles offer a form of daily transportation to be encouraged. Now therefore, I, John B. Gilstrap, Mayor of the City of Danville, Virginia, do hereby proclaim Monday, June 19th, 2017, as Ride to Work Day. And encourage scooters and motorcycle riders to ride to work on that day in an effort to highlight the positive daily use of scooters and motorcycles. Given under my hand, this sixth day of June, 2017, John B. Gilstrap, Mayor. Thank you.
If I could say just a few things, and I'll be very brief, you know me. On behalf of the Virginia Rider Training Program, the Danville Community College Motorcycle Safety Program, the Patrick Henry Community College Motorcycle Safety Program, the Central Virginia Community College Motorcycle Safety Program, and Motorcycle Safety League of Virginia, who I all work forward to help teach motorcycle safety, I ask on June 19th that if you are a rider, please try to ride to work that day. And for those who aren't riders, please look out for motorcyclists. If you're thinking of becoming a rider, please take a safety class so that we can try to help you be a safer rider. And for those experienced riders, maybe want to take a experience course to brush up on those skills and maybe get rid of some of those bad habits. So, thank you very much. I look forward to seeing everybody on June 19th riding those motorcycles.
Bad habits. Thank you, Kitty. Does, Kitty, does Councilman Saunders' bike count as a motorcycle or is that a tricycle?
Yes, it does count as a motorcycle. In Virginia, anything with three wheels, you still have to have a motorcycle license. There are different licenses for three-wheel. You have to have an M3 endorsement for three-wheel and M2 for two, and we have classes for both. He's taken a few of the classes, so.
Is he the one with the bad habits?
I'm not saying who has bad habits, but they happen to be on that side of the table.
He wasn't, he wasn't looking at Councilman Saunders.
Let me, uh, any, Lee?
So if I want to get one of those-
Excuse me, Councilman Vogler?
That's fine. I answer to both. If I want to get one of those Can-Am Spiders with the two in the front and the one in the back, I'd come see you for a class.
You would come see us and take the three-wheel class?
Three-wheel class. I would be like Councilman Saunders, but in the reverse, with the two in the front.
And when you sign up for the three-wheel class, the state actually provides Can-Am Spiders to, to ride. We have three-wheelers, we have trikes. As Councilman Saunders rides, the Can-Ams with the wheels in the front, we also have sidecars as part of that program.
Do you teach them how to ride their trikes on two wheels?
I don't, but Mr. McFadden does.
Councilman Buckner rides on one wheel sometimes. That's all I got, man.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, I ride both.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Gilli. At this time, we will have a special presentation from our city manager and chief of police on the, uh, to bring us up to date and to, uh, give us an, uh, going forward progress report on reduction of violent crime.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of council. Appreciate this opportunity to provide you and the public with an update on our crime reduction strategies. Just as some background, as everyone knows, or most people know, last October, the city council met at a day and a half retreat. They talked about all the things that they felt like were important that the city needed to address. There were three focus areas that came out of that retreat. One of them was to reduce crime, the second was to improve education, and the third was to grow Danville. And I'm here tonight to provide an update on the focus area related to reducing crime. And I've got the police chief, Philip Rodfoot, with me as well. He's going to chime in a little bit later in the conversation. First of all, though, what I wanted to tell you is that we don't want to downplay or diminish any of the tragic events that have recently occurred. Our heart, I know everyone, all the city council members, our hearts go out to the families of the victims and all those who are involved. And, but I do want to say that what has happened recently does not represent Danville. I think that if anybody keeps up with the Register and Be, they saw in this weekend's newspaper and Sunday's paper, a story on the front page about two young ladies from Danville who graduated from UVA, first-generation graduates. They're planning to go on in life to serve others. And I think this and some other things that happened this weekend, including the food truck rodeo, the opening of Violet Brewing Downtown in the River District, those are the kinds of things that I believe represent Danville, more than a few isolated events that are tragic and unfortunate, that we hate that have, have happened. But I think that these things are the things that we need to be celebrating and focusing in on. But again, that doesn't mean that we, that every time something tragic happens, we don't do something to deal with it, to try to reduce that number. So that's why I'm here to talk today. So I want to share what the public can expect of their city, their city council, and the staff here at, at the city. The city council's responsibility is to provide resources, and they do that. The city council provides resources to the police department so that they can effectively enforce the laws of the city and the state in our city. This year's budget, that we have our public hearing on tonight, has increased funding for the police department to help with that effort. And this includes two positions that will be civilian positions that will take the workload off of some sworn officers so that they can spend more time on the street. This was something that was suggested by one, by a strategy in our focus area. City council debated it and decided to include it in the budget that's up for consideration this month. We also have other departments that help with this effort. Parks and Recreation, if anyone's seen this brochure, you can find it in any park. You can find it in a lot of different areas in the community. There are thirty pages of things to do that the Parks and Recreation Department offers for our citizens. Things for all age groups, from very young to very old, and they do a great job. And city council has provided the resources to be able to have a very good Parks and Recreation program that provides opportunities for people to participate in positive activities. There are, there are programs in here. There, sometimes there's a cost. But if you can't afford it, there are scholarships available for those who need it. So please get your children involved in something positive that's offered by Parks and Recreation. You can also go on playdanville.com, playdanvilleva.com, if you can't find the brochure, and you can look up some of the activities that are being offered. We have a social services department that provides help to those who are in need, for struggling families, and connecting those who are vulnerable to the services that they need so that they can, you know, better their lives. City council is invested in blight reduction, has been doing that for many years. This year's budget includes additional funding for blight reduction. It's an important component of what we're trying to do in the community to reduce the, you know, the blight in the community where it fosters crime and issues that the police department often have to deal with. We've also had a lot of focus on economic development. This is where we can provide opportunities to our citizens to, you know, with jobs and with other things, if they want to grow a business, if they want to have a job. City council's invested a lot of resources into our economic development effort, and we're seeing a lot of great benefit there. Another thing that the city council can do is convene organizations and groups to talk about our issues and work together to improve our situation. And in the focus area strategies, we identified a couple of areas. One was to create a youth services task force, and the other was to create a gang task force. The youth services task force has met three times. It consists of organizations, twenty-some organizations, who come together to talk about the issues in the community. They are collaborating. They're making sure that they're providing what services they have in the most effective way possible. And we're going to continue that effort so that we can increase their effectiveness in our community. Our gang task force has met several times as well. This gang task force has recommended that the city adopt the comprehensive gang model, as recommended by the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention. A core group of our gang task force is going to training next week to discuss with some twenty other communities across the country about their efforts in implementing the comprehensive gang model. And we believe that this will pay good long-term dividends in our community if we effectively implement this model. You know, as we discuss what we can do to make our city safer for our residents, I think it's important to understand why our youth are choosing a life that can lead to violence. And our work on the gang task force and the, and the youth task force over the past few months has shown me that we need to be taking a three-pronged approach. City council should be commended for recognizing that you can't just solve our issue with suppression and enforcement alone. They've committed to including prevention in our efforts to reduce crime for the long term. One thing that, though, that we hadn't really talked a whole lot about is intervention. And people have asked, what does intervention mean? What intervention means is you've got to have people trained in the community, people like teachers and others who are able to identify issues in a youth, in our community, and be able to help guide them to the proper resources so that if they're heading down the wrong path, they're instead directed to head down the right path. And that's something that I think we're going to see if we, as we go down the path of implementing this comprehensive gang model, that we're going to need more resources to help in that area. And that, so that's just a little preview of things to come. And, and so the next thing is, what do you, can you expect with our, from our police department? Well, I can guarantee you, because this is, I know city council's expectation of our police department, it's my expectation of our police department, and I know it's their own expectation of themselves. They will be there when you call them, when you need help. They're going to be there for you. And they're going to chase down all the information that they can to solve crimes and give prosecutors the evidence they need to secure convictions. They will also be continuing their efforts in the community, with community policing efforts to build trust within the community so that people in the community feel comfortable telling our police department about things that are happening so that they can effectively deal with crime as it comes along. Speaking of the police department, I'm going to turn it over to our chief, and he's going to give you more details on some of the things that they're doing with regard to enforcement and suppression, and I'll close it up. Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Larkin, Mayor, members of council. Mr. Larkin and the mayor asked me if I would do this presentation tonight to address the spike in murders that we have been experiencing here in Danville. So far in this year, 2017, we've experienced seven murders, which exceeds our yearly average of five. We had a record sixteen murders last year, and it's clear that we're on track in 2017 to possibly equal that number. This raises obvious questions of what caused the increase and what are we doing about it? Records kept since 1953 in Danville show that murders have occurred in cycles. For instance, just three and five years ago, we matched a record low of only three murders. But in 2015 and in 2016, we had six and sixteen murders respectively. The factors that affect these cycles are varied, but have in the past usually been generational and cohort-driven. What we're starting to see, though, is a trend toward shorter cycles between the murders extremes and greater extremes between the numbers of murders. The reason we believe is because this can be attributed to younger offenders, gang affiliation, social media, and access to firearms. The younger offenders are quick to resort to violence. The gang mentality glorifies that violence. Social media exacerbates that violence and that conflict, and access to firearms makes that conflict more deadly. At least five of the sixteen murders last year can be directly linked to gang activity. We believe at least four of this year's seven murders are linked to gang activity. During the last six months, we've also had four separate incidents where Danville officers have been shot at. Gang activity is increasing not only in Danville, but in the region and in a multi-state area on the East Coast. In the past, the gangs in Danville have been loosely associated with the national gang organizations. That is changing. The drive by national gangs to consolidate their power and bring the various homegrown and neighborhood gang groups under their direction is a major driver of our current murder problem. The consolidation effort has created power struggles that create the climate for murder. Gang activity in Danville is not limited to just Danville. We're seeing this happen throughout the South Side region, including the cities of Roanoke and Lynchburg, cities of Greenville, Greensboro, and Winston-Salem in North Carolina, are also experiencing similar increases in murder. Gang activity in the entire geographic area is interrelated and is mainly focused on firearms trafficking and drug trafficking. In response, we've been aware of all of these changes. We've been keeping abreast with them. Our intelligence that we've uncovered and that what we have been given by other agencies has led us to implement these initiatives in response. First, and critically, was we hired, with your permission, a full-time, professionally-trained crime analyst to focus on crime trends and gang activity. And when you're talking about full-time, I mean full-time. He sits at his desk all day long and, and essentially works the computer. The officers have not always had the skills to do that, nor the time to do that with their other activities. So the full-time crime analyst has, has helped considerably. Since November 1st, 2016, last year, the Special Investigations Unit at the Danville Police Department has executed a total of fifty-seven search warrants, which is almost two per week. Of the total, twenty-five were gang participation-focused and thirty-two were drug and firearm-related. That doesn't count the other search warrants that the rest of the department served on other cases, but this is just one unit of the department that did that. Out of those search warrants that Special Investigations served, a total of fifty-three firearms were seized, and drugs were seized in thirty-eight of those fifty-seven searches. We are convinced that that effort made a difference and contributed to the reduction in the violent crime that we saw during the winter and spring months. We've also assigned one investigator full-time to the Virginia State Police Drug Task Force, which focuses exclusively in Pennsylvania County and Danville. The FBI Safe Streets Task Force, based in Charlottesville, as a result of our issues down here with violent crime, has assigned one full-time member, one member full-time, that's a better way to say it, to Danville to assist with the many and varied technical challenges that we have with gang investigations. We've joined the Marshal, United States Marshals Fugitive Task Force that operates in the area so that we can more effectively locate our wanted people. ATF has assigned an agent full-time to assist us here in Danville, and we will be assigning a Danville officer in the near future to their task force to work exclusively in this area. ATF has the ability, and they've done it several times, to send additional agents when required to help out with search warrants or to help out with investigations. And they've used their manpower to investigate the firearms, larceny crimes that have occurred here in Danville, and we've had quite a number of them. In January of this year, the Virginia State Police began assigning two troopers to work on the weekends beside Danville Street Crimes Unit and the Special Investigations Officers to augment our gang interdiction efforts, and that effort continues. Beginning just several days ago, on June 1st, the Virginia State Police agreed to supplement this effort by assigning a total of five troopers full-time. And I mean full-time. That's a full shift. They're not working any other place, to Danville for the summer months. They will work closely with Danville officers in the area of drug interdiction and gang suppression. For three weeks during the summer, at different points during the summer, not three consecutive weeks, but the Virginia State Police has also agreed to assign four special agents full-time to Danville to assist in our investigation. We will work cooperatively, cooperatively with other community agencies to implement the comprehensive gang model mentioned earlier by Mr. Larkin. This has great promise and great success in other locations throughout the country to interrupt the social conditions that create a gang environment while the police department focuses on suppression. In closing, I've got to say that while the number of murders for last year and this year is of great concern to all of us, I can't neglect mentioning that our overall crime rate has been decreasing for the last seventeen years. We classify crimes as overall major and violent. For 2016, our number of major crimes, which are murder, forcible sex, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, larceny, and motor vehicle theft, and arson, dropped to the lowest level since 2000. We dropped from 3,003 in 2000 to 1,876 in 2016. That's a thirty percent increase while also accounting for any population decrease. That is significant. That's our overall crime, our major crimes. But our violent crime is our problem. In 2016, our violent crimes, which are murder, robbery, abduction, forcible sex, and aggravated assault, were up twenty-four percent. They went from two thousand, or 294 in 2015 to 366 in 2016. We had an increase of seventy-two additional violent crimes, and of that seventy-two crime increase, sixty-two were an increase in aggravated assault, and ten were an increase in murders over the previous year. The use of drive-by shootings in two homes for the purpose of intimidation by gang members in the five murders that were attributed to gang activity are the reason for our violent crime increase. I'm confident that the suppression efforts that we are involved in, that we are being assisted with by federal and state agencies, can have a demonstrable effect in the near term on gang activity and as a result on our violent crime or murder rate. The police department cannot sustain this effort alone. We cannot arrest our way out of this problem. If the attraction to join in a gang is not eliminated by a concerted community effort, our success in suppression will be short-lived. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Want to reiterate again that these, this violent activity that's occurring now, again, while important and it needs to be dealt with, and we're dealing with it, it does not represent our city. Our city has forty-three thousand people in here. The vast majority of our citizens are law-abiding, and they contribute to their community in very positive ways, and we need to remember that. And I've talked about earlier what you can expect of your city council and what you can expect of our police department. Now I'm going to ask what we would expect from the community. Now I'm going to ask what we would expect from the community. What we do expect from the community, and it's not just a slogan, we say it all the time, if you see something, say something. It is a nice slogan, but it's serious stuff. If you're out in the community and you see something suspicious, let us know so we can look into it. If it turns out to be nothing, that's okay, we don't mind checking it out. Please, if you see something, say something. Also, if you know something, if you know something about an event that has occurred that we're investigating, let us know. If you don't feel comfortable letting us know and putting your name on the record, you can let us know anonymously, we're glad to take that information as well. Also, we want people to get involved in their community in positive ways, not just our youth, but our adults as well. Direct your children or the children in your neighborhood to the positive activities that we've got in our city, not only through our Parks and Recreation Department and this thirty-some-page document of things to do, but also on other activities like with church youth groups or community organizations like Big Brothers, Big Sisters, or the Boys and Girls Club. Bottom line is that we need to take pride in our city. We've got a lot of great things going on. We need to take back the neighborhoods because there are more of us than there are of them, and it's important that as a community, we work together to make our city a better place for all those who live here. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that Mr. Larkin, Chief Broadfoot, thank you. Sometimes it's just not known, all the work and all the things that are being done, and I think it's important that our citizens know that we, as a city, are not just watching. We are being proactive, we are trying to do the right things to reduce the violent crime as we have the other crimes in the city. Vice Mayor Jones.
I'd like to dito what the mayor stated. The last couple of weeks have been sad in our city. And Chief, one of the things that you did not mention was how over-exerted your officers have been, running from case to case to case. One of the saddest things for me on this past weekend, and Councilman Campbell, is to see Bible Way Church jam-packed with young people, and they were well behaved, as you stated, Chief, but it's one of the most saddest things I've ever seen before in my entire life, the number of young people who were sat at the cemetery who were falling out. One of the things that I compliment this council in all the time, and I really want to speak this to our entire community, and Chief, I'm glad you spoke about this in regards to Facebook. One of the things about this council, as leaders in this community, you very seldom would ever see this council go and edit with one another. As leaders, we try to act like leaders, we try to carry ourselves as leaders, and what the young people are seeing now, the young people must see us all as adults, acting like adults, carrying ourselves like adults, because the police department cannot do it all. Now, there's a question on Facebook that you answered tonight, Chief. The question on Facebook is, what is the city of Danville doing? And you and the city manager addressed this. You have partnerships, and I want to make sure they hear it, because I know you had to do your presentation. A lot of times, this city council and the police department do not get the credit that they deserve, but you had mentioned, and you went over it probably very fast, that people did not hear it, but I want to make sure they know it, that we have partnered with the FBI, we've partnered with the United States Marshals Department, we've partnered with the ATF, we've partnered with the state police, because we're not going to tolerate it. We are not going to tolerate it. To hear the young minister, Bishop Linder's son, say to me how hard it was for him to preach that funeral, we're tired of it, council is busy, but we can't tell everything that we're doing. And Chief, I want to thank you for that presentation. If people want to know what we're doing, is it possible for them to get a copy of that presentation? And they just go to the police department. Thank you, Mr. Larkin.
Councilman Boglum.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the vice mayor for the words that he said. I did have a few things that I wanted to say tonight, and I made some notes, because it's an emotional issue, and I wanted to make sure that my thoughts were collected. I had a lot of time to think about this recently, and there's been a lot of people asking me in the last several days, you know, what I was going to say tonight at tonight's city council meeting, what was I going to say about the recent homicides that we've had in our city? And truthfully, that's a hard question to answer. What can I say? What can I say to a mother who just lost her son or daughter? What can I say to a young person who just lost their best friend? There's nothing an elected official can say that will bring these people back or to remove the hurt and the pain that people are feeling in their hearts for the loss of their loved ones. The question becomes, not what you will say, but what will we do? And as has been mentioned in the last several minutes, since last year, city council, the city staff, the police department, and a number of other organizations have been working on a comprehensive strategy to eradicate violence in our city. Many of these changes, as you just heard, have already been implemented and many more on the way. These changes will help, but they cannot remove the larger problem that we face. Having more police will help, having more communication and presence will help, but what can you do when we have people in our community who are determined, it seems, to kill one another? A million police officers cannot change that. No government program or action can. That can only be changed by changing the hearts and minds of those involved in these activities, and that change can come from only one place, the community itself. I would venture to say that many of the people who are here tonight and possibly watching on TV have some type of connection to someone involved in some of these activities. Maybe it's a relative or a neighbor or even a friend. Now is the time to reach out to them. Don't wait until it's too late. Don't let it be someone that you know, that you see on the 11 o'clock news. Many of these young people are looking for a helping hand, they're looking for a light in the darkness. Be that light. Be that light. And some of you may be thinking, well, I don't know someone like that, I don't know anybody involved in these things, what can I do? There's always something that each one of us can do. Be a mentor, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, coach a youth sports team, volunteer a couple hours to help Constance Covington and the folks over at Cardinal Village. There's always something, always something we can do. Our city's future is at stake. Despite all the positive things happening in Danville that the city manager mentioned, there are a number of positive things happening, but we will never reach our full potential as long as we continue to lose our young people in this way. And we are losing far too many of our young people, losing them as a victim to violence or even as the perpetrator of the violence, because those who've committed these acts eventually are going to be caught, and when they're caught, they're going to spend the rest of their lives in prison, and that is another life wasted. All the hopes and dreams that he or she may have had are gone. And for what? And for who? For nothing. So to every citizen in Danville, I would say this, now is the time for a great awakening in our city. Now is the time to say enough is enough. Now is the time to reach out to our young people before it's too late. Now is the time to be that light in the darkness. Now is the time to take back our city. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Boglum.
Yeah, I'd just like to dito everything everyone else has said, and Chief, thank you for your presentation. Mr. Larkin, thank you as well. The citizens of Danville are tired. We're sick and tired of picking up the paper and reading bad news. We've got a lot of trust in you guys, and we are watching, the city's watching, the region's watching, the state's watching, everybody's watching, and I agree with Mr. Boglum, it's time to take our city back. Thank you.
Councilman Miller.
Well, I'm used to seeing people die. In my business, probably one to two or three people die a month, in part due to these of natural causes. And we accept that, we do our best to keep them alive, but usually these people are 50, 60, 80 years old. Nobody gets used to seeing young people die. Somebody seventeen-year-old is killed on what should be one of the happiest days of his life is tragic. When a 23-year-old dies, a 21-year-old, they never have a chance at the beginning of their life's journey, they never have a chance to impact on the world, to make things better for the rest of us. Who knows what they might have become? We'll never know. This is just tragic beyond compare, and it's time that Danville, the people in Danville start doing what we can to reverse this trend. Our youth, we're losing our youth. We can't do this, and our city will never thrive if our young people are lost, whether they die or to gangs or whatever. We must reverse this. As another councilwoman said, this is going to take an effort by all of us. Can't stand by and criticize and say the police should do this, or the council should do that. We're all in this together. We're losing our city. We have to stop this. And I assure you that every person on this council, our foremost concern is the health and the welfare of our citizens. Help us. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Communication from visitors, citizens who desire to speak on matters not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Citizens who desire to speak on agenda items will be heard when the agenda item is considered. Anyone wish to speak on an item not on the agenda? Please come forward and state your name. Let me remind everyone that in front of you there is a timer, and we do, because we have so many speaking, you will be asked to limit your comments to five minutes? Five minutes?
Unless it's a group.
Three minutes?
Unless it's a group.
Oh, yeah, unless it's a group. If you're representing a group, it is 10.
My name is Abdul Hakim Abdullah. I am the resident of Danville, and tonight is sort of a special occasion for me and the organization that I represent. I am the Muslim Men in Action Chairman for the entire state of Virginia. I am an emissary for the Islam in America movement, as well as an advocate for homeless Muslim women and children. First, I'd like to say with the name of God, most gracious, most merciful, I am pleased to be here on behalf of the Muslim community in Danville. Dear Honorable Mayor and distinguished councilmen, I greet you in the Arabic language, Assalamu Alaykum, translated in English, peace be unto you all. This is the holy Muharramadon for Muslims all over the world. 1.6 billion Muslims are required to celebrate this month in self-reflection, introspection, and fasting. I am fasting right now, so if my voice leaves me a little bit, I have any water all day. I come here today not only to extend the greetings of peace and blessings during this holy month, but with your permission, Honorable Mayor, I would like to just have a quick moment of silence, and that can be part of my time, and that is in recognition of all of the people all over the world that are losing their lives, men, women, and children in senseless acts of violence. So if we could just do that for a moment, and on behalf of all of those people that are being terrorized and dying all over the world because of these senseless acts of violence, I would appreciate it very much. Also, this day is D-Day. A lot of people died in World War II so that we could have the freedoms that we have today. I also served proudly in the United States Navy for four years. I served my country proudly, as well as many other leadership roles and organizations. But, you know, we have to understand that we have not yet reached a point where we can really fellowship and true brotherhood. I know that a lot of people read the paper, I know a lot of people see the news, but do we really understand what a Muslim is? Now, the Muslim community are very quiet people, you know, they're almost to the point where they isolate themselves. They're shopkeepers, store owners, restaurant owners, you know, quiet, tax-paying people. We are not the people that you see on TV. We are not the people that you read in the newspapers. We are peaceful people. Those people, these so-called extremists and terrorists, they are not Muslims. They are not Muslims. They do not believe in the true ideology of Islam, which is a religion of peace. I'm a first-generation Muslim, and my brother was a second-generation Muslim. We are coming up on the anniversary of his death, so now I'm the only one left in my entire family. My family history runs deep in the city of Danville. I was born and raised here. I have nine other siblings, some of them you might know if you follow sports. Rod Woodson, Rod Woodson is my brother, my half-brother, but I call him my brother, as well as Darren Woodson, who played for the Dallas Cowboys. Rod Woodson played for the Steelers. They were both All-Pro, and Rod Woodson is now Hall of Famer, so I don't need to go any further than that, but my roots run deep in this community. You can trace my roots back on my father's side, the Woodson family, all the way to Thomas Jefferson. We are descendants of Thomas Jefferson. In Fort Mitchell, Virginia, every year, we have a Woodson family reunion, and some of the descendants on the other side, okay? My Caucasian brothers, yes, and cousins, they showed up last year for the first time at the family reunion. I thought that was a historic occasion. Muslims and Islam are nothing, we're no strangers to the fabric of America. Thirty percent of the slaves that came to this country, thirty percent, were Muslims. They landed on the shores of this country. They were Muslims. President Thomas Jefferson, he also had a copy of the Holy Quran. Actually, he had three, and I presented the Honorable Mayor with one about a week ago. I hope that you enjoy his reading. He had, Thomas Jefferson had three. One was stolen, one got burned up in a house fire, and another one now is in the Library of Congress, where it will rest forever, a copy of the Holy Quran, that which the Muslims believe in, our scripture. So on behalf of my family members and on behalf of the Muslim community, I extend to the city of Danville and surrounding townships a pledge of peace, mutual respect, and fellowship. We do not condone and we denounce any acts of terrorism and violence of any kind. I, we, the Muslims in the city of Danville, we look forward as a part of the fabric of this nation and this city to building long-lasting community relationships. So today is a special day, because I understand that no one has ever approached city council, the full-body city council, from the Islamic community for as long as we've been here, and we've been here a long time in Danville, has ever approached you all. It's a special day for us, all of us here, not just the Muslims. And I'm happy to be the one to represent on behalf of the Islamic community here. So I just want to say that I thank you, I thank God for this special day, this time, to address you, Honorable Mayor and distinguished councilmen, and let us pray for all those that are still serving around this country, that are dying for the freedoms that we have today. Let us remember all those who died on D-Day. You know, a lot of them I didn't even know, but they were my fellow brothers, they are veterans also. Let us pray for peace for the city of Danville, because when you hurt any citizen hurts, we all hurt. We feel that too. We feel that too. So I just want to extend once again the peace and blessings that Almighty God can give. We ask Him for His mercy and His grace on us all. I thank you so much for allowing me this time to speak on behalf of the Islamic community and my community brothers and sisters, the ones that I live in, right over off of Cimmin Avenue. I'm representing them also. I thank you all for this time. God bless you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to an item not on the agenda? Please come forward and state your name.
My name is Ken Laurent. Excuse me, I'm sorry, not used to speaking in my microphone. I'm used to people, I'm a teacher, so I'm used to people not wanting to hear me talk very long. So I'll try to make this as brief as I can. Slideshow. Here we go. And because I'm a teacher, I love PowerPoint, so please bear with me. I brought with me today my son Jordan and his friend Jamar. Stand up, guys, just quick. All right, cool, all right. So they're just fourteen-year-old boys. They want to play basketball in the street, and we're having some problems with that. I got, and I had a bigger PowerPoint, but my time is limited. Oh my God, I only got one minute left. Okay, here we go. This is my neighborhood, boring. Okay, here we go. I played baseball, I played kickball, I played football in that street. Never an issue. Here's the ordinance that we're quoted by Danville Police as to the, how we're breaking the law, I guess, by having my son and his friends play basketball in front of our house. And I parsed it down, but I don't want to spend a lot of time with it because, oh, I'd just say that if we're convicted, it's a $2,500 fine and/or twelve months in jail for playing basketball in the street. Okay, for any others that attended without a permit from city manager, which is fine, except for anything that is given by permit, can be rescinded. And in fact, it is in violation of the city code to push a baby stroller on Cumberland Drive. There aren't any sidewalks. They're supposed to walk on the, on, I read his front lawns, is what I was told. There's an easement where people can do that, but they're not supposed to walk in the street. And again, I talked about that without a permit from the city manager. Okay, why is it enforced this way? Well, one neighbor. So I would ask, is this ban on basketball enforced throughout the city or just on Cumberland Drive? If just Cumberland Drive, why? Do children play in the quiet streets in your neighborhoods? I did. I'm sure all of you probably have as well. Have your children played outside today in the street? Why is it basketball? What about these signs? Why, why were these signs invented? Caution children and pets playing. I don't know about the pets, but drive, why would they have signs like these in our quiet residential streets? And Cumberland Drive is a very quiet residential street. The only reason people would drive down Cumberland Drive is if you live on Cumberland Drive. That's why we bought the house on Cumberland Drive. Now, I'm not against this ordinance. In fact, there are good reasons for it. Here's a couple of examples. Flash mobs. Who wants that in their neighborhood? Not me, especially this one. Star Wars, forget about it, okay? We don't want this either. Torches and pitchforks. We don't want riots, we don't want that kind of thing, civil unrest. And this is a computerized simulation of the events of November eighth, this past November eighth. There's a couple of boys in their quiet neighborhood. They got a basketball goal, as you can see, but they're not doing that now. They're just kicking a soccer ball. Uh-oh, somebody, that's, that's, that's not good. I see, I actually see police officers engaging with the kids and playing football with the kids in the street. What a kind of lawless society they live in. And this is the security one where you have dogs pulling children in strollers. And yes, they are in the street. Terrible, right? Can anybody see a difference? I don't know. So I got two seconds. I guess I'm done with time, but let me, if I could beg for a couple more, I'm sorry. Who are we? What are our values? Do we value the sights and sounds of kids engaging in fellowship and positive activities? We've talked about, you know, crime prevention. We talked about giving them alternative to gangs. I mean, can we blame young people sometimes when everything seems to be against their interests? You know, everything's so hostile? Do we value the things that bring us together in our community? Or, or do we, what, do we cater to the whims, excuse me, I'm sorry, I don't know what happened. Cater to the whims of the few of us in this community that bring out the worst in us? Because that's what's important to us. Come on. Okay. Do we value the concept of community police? And I know that was brought up. I, I think it's an awesome idea. I know, I don't mean to speak for Police Chief Mr. Larkin, but I think community police is an awesome idea. I know I heard it from Mr. Vice Mayor and Mr. Vogler as well. I don't think I'm out of the realm here.
Let me, excuse me, but you're, you've expanded, your time is up, so please wrap this up.
Yes, I'll just leave it at that. This is kids, Police Respiring Floor Call of kids playing basketball in the street. And this is how the police in Gainesville, Florida decided to deal with it. Again, I harbor no hard feelings against the city of Danville Police Department. When they came out, they were very apologetic. They did not want to tell my son he could not play basketball. They were simply doing their jobs, and I respect that. But this is another way it can be done.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to items not on the agenda? Please come forward and state your name and give us a positive update.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Larkin, Mr. Whitfield, Mr. Remus. My name is Davis Montgomery. I'm the district manager for Duke Energy. It's been a while since I've been here. It's good to see you all. I'm just bringing you a brief update about activities with our Dan River Station, which is just down the road from you folks, on some recent activities. As you know, as we remember back, we were to move the ash from that facility. We were to do it in a two-stage process. The first stage was we were going to move it by rail to approve lined landfill managed by Waste Management in Jetersville, Virginia. We have moved 1.2 million tons of that ash to that facility. We're in the second phase of what we're doing in terms of disposal of that, and that is constructing a 23-acre double-lined encamped landfill on our property right outside of Eden. This is going to be 23 acres in total. It'll be three cells. We have just gotten the permit from the state to operate the first five, 5.2-acre cell of that landfill. So we got that permit this past, this past week. There's approximately 1.75 million tons of ash still left on the property. It's in the old basins, which reside right next to the river. So we had to excavate the first dry ash stack so that we could construct the landfill. And now we're going to move that over to the, to the landfill. We will restore that topography down to the river in a, in a manner that's going to be conducive to prevent flooding, but also make it a nice place for folks to use it to wrap it up and down the river. So just a brief update on the ash situation at our, at our landfill there in Dan River. I have two other things I want to mention just quite briefly. One, we have been engaged since October 2014 in a Dan River Basin Stakeholders Group. It's got representatives from this entire community, up and down from Stokes County to the Car reservoir. Mr. Bill Screamia and some others from the Danville area participate in that, as well as some folks from Halifax County and others. They have been looking for things that were not addressed by the federal and state activities related to the coal ash. And they have implemented a website that's out there now called State Crossings. That's S-T, the number eight, crossings. And it's got a video that promotes the identity of the Dan River Basin, the entire basin. If you have a chance, and if I was a little more adept, I'd pull it up for you here tonight. But take a look at that video because it starts off here in Danville. It gives you a look of just the many things that you can do up and down the Dan River Basin. And the last thing I have to mention for you, and I'll be glad to accept any questions, is there has been a Trails program, T-R-A-I-L-S. This is an outdoor eco-recreation program started at Rickenham Community College with a $700,000 grant from Duke Energy. $90,000 of that, of that grant is key towards scholarships for out-of-state students from Virginia to be able to attend that program. And it's about trail building and rafting and safety on the river, all those things that help promote this region and the things that we like about the river. So that has just been started up and running now, and they're looking for their first director. So that's my run-through, the update. I'll be glad to answer any questions for you.
Dr. Melon?
Yeah, what is the status of recycling coal ash and concrete or whatever? Are you able to use some of that, that way?
Yes, there's two primary uses for the recycling of the coal ash. One is in cement, and it takes the place of the Portland portion of cement. It's a good hardener and dries much quicker. So the cement manufacturers actually are looking for this. We do not have any cement manufacturers in North Carolina, so we're currently sending that by truck to cement manufacturers here in Virginia. And I think there is one small one in North Carolina. We currently recycle over 70% of the fly ash that's generated today. We're trying to find ways by creating three beneficial reuse sites at three existing stations that we can take the coal ashes there and make it into a product that can be used for these same purposes. Dr. Melon?
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any other questions for me?
Thank you.
If you'd let me off easy. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to speak to an item not on the agenda? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of law enforcement, and all others that are assembled. My name is H. Elizabeth Hairston. I was born and reared most of my young life here in Danville, Virginia. And I'm here before you tonight because I'm concerned about the state of the youth here in Danville. I currently reside in Washington, DC, but my heart is always going to be here in Danville. So when I heard about my young cousin, Tion, and his murder, I got in my car and I came down here determined to be a part of making a difference. And I went out and I talked with many of the youth. I, I just randomly stopped, young guys mostly, and just had conversations with them. And what most of them conveyed to me was that, one thing that they all had in common, those that were productive and those that were vulnerable as well, they were all felt defeated because they felt like they didn't have any alternatives. They felt like they didn't have any outlets. And then I go up to my old elementary school, West Mola, and I look at the basketball court, and it's, it's just not, it, it, it needs to be revitalized. And then I went up to, to the American Legion Park there, and I saw the courts and all the options that they have there. And I thought that was beautiful. And I talked with one of the young men as I stood there, and he just shared with me that he wished that there was some kind of environment like that closer inside of Danville. And with that being said, I also wanted to, I'm thankful for what the Police Chief shared. I agree with him wholeheartedly, but I'm going to share with you another side of it. So I speak to you on behalf of the youth and young adults in Danville, Virginia. I deeply regret this reality, and I'm sickened by the fact that members of my culture have come to this point. It is extremely disheartening to learn that the error of our ways, of the errors of the ways of a select few of our young people has resulted in the need for the city of Danville to be forced to make extreme protective provisions for its vulnerable cities, citizens, many which are paralyzed with fear because we, the parents, guardians, and clergy, as well as political leaders of our community, were not able to band together and develop a reasonable strategy by which we could reach our lawsons and daughters. But instead, we opted to relinquish our authority to an additional amount of law enforcement officers that are trained and prepared to sift, sift members of your innocent family and your community while they protect and serve you, which is their sworn duty. So let this be known, that it was said. I promise you that when this new strength of the police force becomes active, you will feel safe in your homes, but outside, you will surely be a vulnerable search target. Therefore, I encourage you to consider the end result regarding this legislation. Now, on the other hand, this is still our problem, and I'm talking about the African-American culture. I feel like some of us have failed our children, those that are vulnerable. So if there is any hope for our misguided youth, that hope is that through much, much fasting and prayer, we finally band together and make our young people the priority and be more vigilant as it relates to them. We must exercise maximum control over governing what our young people see, hear, and do as much as is possible. I believe that it is imperative that young people are empowered and encouraged to embrace the fact that in this life, we all will go through some things, and that in every situation, the outcome of our circumstances is a result of how we get through what we go through. I also believe that it is equally important that young people clearly understand the fact that we in our minds create the environment that we live in, and that our choices will certainly dictate what results from the challenges that we endure and our, our success. I encourage you, love your teenagers and young adults still the way you did when they were, when they were infants and first gifted to you. Now is the time to show your unconditional love by preparing them to become rightstanding citizens of society with good character and the benefit of the privileges that come with this discipline. We must tackle this problem with swift and resourceful tactics if we hope to recover the members of our culture that are lost and have gone astray while suffering from negligence and are now addicted to self-destruction. Medical term PTSD, post-traumatic stress disorder. Many of the young people that are in and out of the judicial system only lack guidance, and many are only guilty of being born and raised in an environment that has not properly demonstrated what is acceptable. As a result of that, coupled with our scenario, other scenarios, many of our young people are registered into the law enforcement database, or at the very least, they have been, have been or will be all searched at least three times before adulthood, arrested numerous times, and a misdemeanor or felony charge of some sort seems to be the only promise that is kept. For every black male in and around urban communities across the United States, no matter what the content of their character is, I reiterate, the plight of our young people today is a direct result of neglected emotional and mental scars and untreated abuse that is agitated, and we, rather than offer real alternative solutions or psychiatric help, society uses their plight as an excuse to exercise a lack of value for his life. There was a time when the church was very powerful, and the time when the early Christians rejoiced at being deemed worthy to suffer for what they believed. We must take heed. Family, let us reconcile, stand and support one another. We should team up in pairs of threes that add up to be a great number. We must deposit love, self-worth, and self-respect into the lives of our young people so that they see themselves like we see them, lovable, capable, and driven. Then, united we can stand and demand respect and equality from those that seek to further oppress us. United we stand, divided we fall. Peace and love, we shall overcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on an item not on the agenda? Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Ina Dixon. I'm a resident of Danville, 315 Lynn Street. Thank you, Council. I just wanted to address you very briefly on behalf of the organization, or the program I run here in Danville. It's called History United, and it is a program of Virginia Foundation for the Humanities. And I'd like to invite you to a program we're having this Friday, June 9th, at High Street Baptist Church. It's a talk history lecture on the roots of segregation in Virginia, and it's free and open to the public. This talk, Roots of Segregation in Virginia, is given by historian Ed Ayers. He's the president emeritus of University of Virginia. He's the author of a great book called The Promise of the New South, which is all about the South after the Civil War. He also was awarded the National Humanities Medal in 2013 by President Obama. Ayers will discuss the history of segregation following the Civil War and how cities crossed the South into the 20th century upheld a system of segregation and for many years, split the community in two. And this community discussion on June 9th, which is free and open to the public, is an important one to have. This talk allows us to engage with the difficult stuff of our past and the realization and the real facts that this city, along with many others in the South, denied its citizens equality and justice, which was the promise, and makes a human life worth living and a community worth living in. And by engaging in this story, we don't just wallow in it, but we can be released from it. And that's the idea of this conversation on Friday night, to release ourselves from the past injustice and move forward together as a stronger and more unified community. So with that, I again invite you to attend this Friday night. It will be held at June, at High Street Baptist Church on June 9th, starting at 6:30 p.m. with a reception. There'll be plenty of food, and it is free and open to the public. I have flyers, and I will put them right outside the door. Thank you.
I have one question, especially for those that are here or are in the TV audience, is that I noticed the ad that said in the paper said RSVP.
Yes, RSVP, that is for head count, and I would love to know that you're coming to the event on Friday. So you can RSVP. Find more event information on our Facebook page, History United, or on our website, historyunited.org.
Please state your name.
My name is Paul Harper. Paul Harper. I heard somebody was talking about the gang-related and the guns, that people get shot down. I'm saying that I had enough. I had a son that was gunned down and robbed. I'll go out and talk with a lot of young kids, and I was wondering why the young kids was coming to me, asked me how did I get out of the reality. I've been in that same role with the gun reality and the street game, but I got over that, and they was, I would tell them how I got out of the street game thing and the gun thing because the bullets missed me and hit my friends. The drug reality, and I was telling them about what happened to me. Some of my friends, when they OD'd, they died, and I lived, and I was wondering why I was still here to talk to these young people about the gun violence. And I have helped a few of them, they went back to school, they got off drugs, they put the guns down, they got, come out of the gang reality. And after that, what happened to my son, Paul Jr., he was shot seven times up in Woodside in Danville. And I noticed that what happened during this past month, what happened, I had some more to come to me and ask me what should they do. I told them to, you can get better, you can come out of this what you're going through. You got to hang around the people that's going somewhere because if you hang around the ones that's doing the same thing, you're going to end up in the same reality, the same boat. Either you're going to get shot, or either you're going to end up in jail by hanging around what you, what they're going through. So my point is today is, I'm still wanting to get back out here in the street. I had somebody just like me to get out here in the street to help pull the young kids out of the street with the guns, and I think it can be done. And I thank y'all for giving me the time to speak on gun violence. I don't want to see any more of our young kids get shot down, gunned down, and dealing with drugs. And I want to say that I'm overcoming from all this reality I just talked to you about. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm your old mayor and council. My name is David Cross. I'm the general manager of the Danville Braves baseball team and a resident of Danville. I would just like to say, I know there's been a lot of talk. After hearing everybody previously speak, I did change my comments a little bit, but I think what Councilman Vogler said about us as a community needing to step up and help with this violent, I think us as a corporate community need to step up and help with that as well because our corporations are the ones that hire people in this community, and we need to do our job to help, you know, stem that violence, help the youth find outlets. So there's things that, you know, city manager, and I know Chief Broadfoot had to leave, but if there's things that we can do and help with that in our, in our business, you know, we welcome that. I know we do things with, you know, I'm a passport member of the Boys and Girls Club. I know Mayor Gilstrap was involved with Big Brothers, Big Sisters. We all do our part, but I think us as corporations, we need to chip in as well, not as just as individuals, which is badly needed, but us as corporations as well. So with that being said, hopefully we can help. I'm here really just to mention that we are getting ready to start our season here in Danville. We've been here since 1993. Next Tuesday, we're having, we will be hosting a chamber after hours event for chamber members. June 20th, we are actually hosting a fan fest out at the ballpark. I want to welcome everybody out to that. That is a free event to the public. Our team will be here practicing. We will have our inflatable games up, food out at the ballpark. Like I said, it's free to the public. That will start at approximately 4:30 and run until about 8 o'clock. Hopefully see what our team will look like. It's a little wild in the beginning, but hopefully by mid-July, we're hitting on all cylinders. So we still don't know who our team's going to be. The draft is a week from yesterday, so that will fill out who some of our players will be. That will be a fun event. And then our home opener is Sunday, June 25th at 6:00 p.m. That is the Sunday. It's not a normal opening night for us, but, and our normal games are at 4:00 on Sunday, but being that it's a Sunday, we're starting it a little bit later. And that will be against the Princeton Rays. We have great promotions all summer, including Dollar Mondays, $2 Tuesdays, things like that. You can get a ticket for $2. It's hard to beat that. You can't even get to a movie for $2. So we have great events, and our fireworks on July 3rd, which is always a fan favorite. We enjoy bookending ours with the cities the following day. It always works out well for the citizens of Danville. Just like to, again, remind everybody that you can, you can come out and see some great entertainment, future stars. We consider ourselves a great asset to this community. We appreciate what the city has done to Dan Daniel Memorial Park and to American Legion Post 325 Field where we play, and where GW High School plays, American Legion plays, DCC Baseball plays. It's a great facility. The park is great. I love this time of year watching people come out. I know somebody, another young lady mentioned, coming out to Dan Daniel and how, what the assets were, and she's right, we need to do that all over the city. But it is enjoyable coming out at lunch and seeing people out at the park, enjoying the outdoors. And, you know, we need to see more of that in Danville. So with that being said, the last thing I'll say is, hopefully you'll see me here next year presenting, as will next year. Many may not realize, but it's our 25th anniversary next year in Danville. So there'll be a lot of things planned for next year. I know that's another year down the road, but we're looking forward to it. We're working on some big things for that. So with that, I appreciate your time. I know y'all got a busy, busy night ahead of y'all, so thank y'all.
Thank you. Play ball. Anyone else wish to speak on an item not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. And before we do the consent agenda, I would like to bring attention to the councilman that the minutes have been moved to the consent agenda. The following budget amendments, items A through C have been previously discussed by city council and introduced for first reading. There will be no separate discussion of these items, and they will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired, a council member or a citizen, the items, our items will be removed from the consent process and considered separately. Counselor, is there any item you'd like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Councilman Campbell.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adopting the resolutions for A, B, and C.
Is there a second? Councilman Buckner. Any discussion on those three items? Hearing none, call roll, please.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Widdell.
Aye.
Under new business, consideration of adopting an ordinance to rezone property at 656 Holland Road, open to public hearing.
Hello, I'm David Mylan, the L E D professional, representing Bonnie Nance, and I'd be out dancing in questions you might have.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing? Hearing none, close the public hearing. Counsel, what is your pleasure? Councilman Miller.
Mayor Gilstrap, I'd like to propose an ordinance for zoning from SR Suburban Residential District to OTR Old Town Residential District, 656 Holland Road, otherwise known as Grid 0508, Block 004, parcel 00001 of the City of Danville, Virginia, zoning district map.
Is there a second? Second, Council Campbell. End discussion. Councilman Shanks.
Yes, I was wondering if I can ask Mr. Gillis some questions. Mr. Gillis.
Oh.
That's all.
I don't mind if you.
The, in the report that was presented in our package, there was a discussion about a special use permit regarding all the properties that are involved here that would be necessary for installation of well and septic tanks. Can you, okay, first of all, if these are going to be rezoned and consolidated, well, this one is going to be rezoned, and it's going to be consolidated with the others, then there's only one special use permit required. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So it's not a separate, after this goes through, there'll be one special use permit. Will there be a fee charged for the special use permit?
Actually, it's a variance request. It's already went to the Board of Zoning Appeals. They obtained the necessary variance to do the well and septic. It's not a special use permit.
Okay.
They just have this rezoning, and then they can do the consolidation. It's approved on April, or, excuse me, May 20th? May 18th.
Okay, what is the deal about not presently having water and sewer that's in the report?
That's the, city code requires all lots, new lots that are created to have access to water and sewer or obtain a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals to that requirement. On May 18th, they obtained the variance necessary to allow the subdivision. They have to do the consolidation, that's why they're here.
So there's only, there was only one variance, or they needed five variances?
It was one variance, all the properties were listed under the same report because they all went under the same case.
Did the city charge a fee for the variance?
It was $200, yes.
This is, and the reason why they have to have variance is the city don't, doesn't, and pay the fee, is the city doesn't provide water and sewer.
Not in that portion of the city, that is correct.
And this is what I, thank you. This is exactly what I think's wrong and what I've asked the city manager to look into. The city requires the applicant to pay $200 because the city didn't provide them water and sewer. There's something wrong with that. And I thought, I thought it had been addressed, addressed years ago, but, and I'm sorry, I'm not upset with you, Mr. Gillis, or this was an opportunity to point out exactly what's going on, and I hope that we address this issue. And personally, I'd like, I hate that they had to pay the $200 application fee.
Mr. Clark?
Councilman Shanks, we, after the last, I think, work session, maybe it was the last one or the one before, I think it was previously mentioned that this was an issue that we should look into. We had a meeting maybe a week or two ago to discuss this issue and to determine how many lots in, within the city don't currently have access to water and sewer. We wanted to make sure we looked carefully at the data, understood what we're facing, and understood all the information, and then developed a policy based on, on the information we know. So we're in the process of addressing that. And I think, I just wanted to point out that we did hear, here, when it was brought up during the work session, we were, you know, constrained by time, unfortunately, in this case.
I understand that, but many of the areas that have to go through this variance process were promised city water and sewer. Now, there will be, there's, the attorney has advised us that we have certainly, the city has certainly met all the requirements of annexation, but this is an issue, they were promised water and sewer, and if you're going to develop land or subdivide or consolidate land in these areas, and it's all, all these extreme annex areas, I think there ought to be a more equitable way of taking care of it. Thank you.
Good point, and I think that you will keep us updated on that discussion, and hopefully we can get this corrected.
Councilman Shanks, are you saying that the $200 should be refunded back to the citizens?
I fought that, in a similar case several years ago, I thought that's what happened, and I thought the code was changed, but it didn't happen. But I don't think it's fair that that happened.
I agree with you on that.
Well, I'm not saying I disagree, but before we establish, I would like to get a final report here before we do any refunding from ever how far back this goes, and it goes back a ways. I would, I'm assuming that, Mr. Shanks.
Yeah, when I brought it up, I did mention that there were cases in the pipeline right now, so.
Right. You know, this is not an isolated case. I'm sure he would love to have his $200 back, but I think that we need to look, to develop or change our policies and then decide what we're going to do.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a teaching moment.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Call roll, please.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Widdell.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Consideration of adopting an ordinance to amend Chapter 41, zoning ordinance of the Danville City Code, open to public hearing. Anyone wish to comment at the public hearing? Hearing none, close the public hearing. Pleasure of council.
I'd like to make a motion to table this.
I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Put it on the floor for.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion made to table the ordinance amending Chapter 41 in title. I got to get a order here. We got to have a motion before we can table it.
I think we'll have a motion and a second by a member, and then Mr. Widdell can come back and make his.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing to table right now.
Second.
Second.
We got.
I'm going to make a motion.
Well, we, I think before we can table it, we've got to have a motion on the floor. We do not have a motion on the floor. He motioned to table this, but I believe we got a motion on the floor, and then we will recognize Councilman Widdell's to table. Councilman Vogler.
Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 41 in title zoning ordinance of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, 1986, as amended more specifically Article 2, Section X, entitled Violations and Penalties, Adding Section Y Civil Penalties, or Certain Violations, Adding Section Z Appeal Period for Certain Violations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Miller. Discussion on the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to table it.
Councilman Widdell made a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Saunders, second. Councilman Saunders, seconded. I do not, I believe there's no discussion on a motion to table, but please call a roll.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask a question.
I, correct me, I, I do not believe after a motion to table and a second, we can make comment. Is that correct?
That's correct.
There's no discussion.
If there was a question and you moved on before I had a chance to be recognized.
Well, a- actually, I, I think Councilman Campbell, in the, in the procedure is that that discussion would occur before the motion to table, but since it did not, we have a motion to table and a second. Now, if you do not agree with tabling it, you would oppose that motion.
No, I don't oppose it, he just didn't give an explanation why he wanted to table.
I don't think, can we do that?
That's up to the chair.
Okay. Why you want it tabled, sir?
After reading it, it, it got way too much in the weeds for me. It was, it was, I thought it needed some more study.
By counsel or by city?
Both.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Call, any other, oh, we can't discuss it. Call roll, please.
Mayor Gilstrap.
No.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Dr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion was tabled, I'd like to remind counsel that once a motion is tabled, it normally stays tabled, but it will have to be brought up at a different meeting to bring from the table. And, item two. Resolution approving the budget of the various funds of the City of Danville for the fiscal year ending June the 30th, 2018 for. Am I missing a page?
See.
Pardon?
See.
Bottom of page three.
Oh, see, I'm sorry. I already checked that out, I'm ahead of myself. Consideration of fiscal year 2018 city budget and capital and special projects plan, open the public hearing. Hearing none, close the public hearing. Now, what is your pleasure, counsel?
These duty could be taken individually.
Councilman Vogler would take these, all three, one at a time. Councilman Vogler.
All right. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution approving the budget to the various funds of the City of Danville for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018, first reading.
Is there a second? Councilman Buckner. Any discussion? First reading. First reading, number three. Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 2018 capital and special projects plan for the City of Danville, Virginia. First reading.
Is there a second? Councilman Miller. First reading, item number four. What's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve a budget appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year 2018. First reading.
Is there a second? Councilman Saunders. Any discussion? First reading. Communication, city manager?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Deputy city manager?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
City attorney?
Nothing, sir.
City clerk is off?
She also has nothing.
Well, you're city clerk, you're acting city clerk.
I have nothing to say.
City clerk. Okay.
City clerk.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Jones.
I just want to thank everyone for tonight, there's been a lot going on in our community. Bishop Linder and his wife is here. Bishop Linder, want to thank you all that you're doing in the Calhoun Jefferson Street community over there. The mayor and I was at a meeting last night where two of our young people from our past youth council, they're planning an event July the 1st in the Green Street Door J. Thomas Park, and they've asked for council to be partner with them. The council's been talking for a long time about taking it to the street. So, July the 1st, some of us were planning to be with you all on, at the Green Street Park. The last comment, Mr. Mayor, is very important that the media and what the media share about our community. Just want to thank you, John, and everybody from Star Tribune, and Jessica. Jessica, you're out there in the streets and you're putting it out there, and one of the things I like about what you say on the TV and the radio, if you see something, say something. So, again, we remind all our citizens, please, if you see something, say something. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Miller.
Well, I was impressed by the basketball in the streets speech, you know, I remember when I was growing up, we played in the streets a lot, but we didn't have parks to play in, and I think that can be a problem here in Danville, we need to improve our parks and our basketball goals and our places so the kids have a nearby place where they can go play, so they don't have to be in the streets, which is quite dangerous. I didn't see that when I was a kid, playing baseball in the streets, but I do now as an adult, so it'd be better if they weren't playing in the streets, but if they had nice facilities to play in nearby, you know, we don't, we have basketball areas, they don't have, they don't have goals, nets on the goal anymore, and some of the parks aren't in very good shape. Music on Main starts this week, this year, again, it's at the Fountain. There's about six of them on Thursday night at 6:30, you come and bring a chair or blanket and listen to some good music, it's free. Hopefully, in a couple of years, it'll be in our new park across the way, our new downtown park. This is the anniversary of D-Day. I had opportunity to be there a couple, three years ago at the 70th anniversary of D-Day. If you ever get a chance, go, it is, it just takes your breath away to see what happened on those days, how they had the courage to go on those beaches, I don't know. And, you know, thousands were killed that day, but people forget, it took three months to get out of Normandy, and in that time, 36,000 Americans were killed, and a similar number of Brits and French and Polish who were finally on the allied side, and thousands of soldiers were killed, and all to keep our freedom. The cemetery there has 10,000 graves, American graves, including the Bedford Boys, many of those are buried there. And again, our hearts go out to the terrorism mentioned around the world, the people in London, the people in Manchester, the people in Kabul, Afghanistan, the people in Iraq, it's just, the word of the day seems to be, see how many people, innocent people you can kill. And that's not by Muslims, that's by people who are just on the fringe of somewhere, I don't know where, how they, how they can actually take the lives of that many people and just, without thinking, that's, they're so purposeful, they kill people. So, our prayers go with these people. Thank you.
Mr. Saunders.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to commend you on your use of discretion part of the chair with regards to the time tonight. Very appropriate to allow people to say what they have to say, and you certainly gave them that privilege, and thank you for using your power of discretion. Very well done. Like to also commend city manager, Chief Rothfoot, for their presentation tonight, and I certainly hope that the public watched it, listened to it, and as Mark Aaron will replay these, or go on YouTube, pull it up and look at it often, and get the, the information that was distributed, very, very helpful, and we know that our citizens have more ideas, and they are coming in to each of us, as well as our manager and our police department. Also want to say a special thanks to, again, Chief Rothfoot, Police Department, first responders, everyone, for what you're doing with regards to trying to keep our city safe. I too want to thank those who are expressing themselves with regards to talking to family, talking to communities, having the conversation about see something, say something, get involved, start now with your children at an early age, early age, as well as work on the issue that we have with our young people and our young adults as well. Last Sunday, I, on my own, I, I drove around to 10 different churches last Sunday, and I saw more people at each church than I normally see on any given Sunday. I know the conversation was prayer and what can we do? That's good. That tells me clearly that the community is engaged, and I certainly hope that will continue. I stopped by, and I know many churches are doing positive things, and I will just say this, I did stop by one church Sunday, Loyola Baptist Church, and they had no idea I was coming, I didn't go to be seen, I went to worship, I wanted to be there. And they recognized 13 young people graduating from Headstar Elementary School, Middle School, High School, and College. That was a joy to see, and I commend Loyola Baptist on that and other churches and other institutions that are recognizing our young people. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for holding up the register and B with those two young ladies graduated from UVA, one has already been accepted in the master's program, and the other one's applying. Many, many things are happening in our city. Yes, we have some real bad news going on right now, but we have more positive things that are being done, and I ask that we highlight as much positive activity that we can. In our Danville Public School system, we have a little less than 6,000 students. Those students are doing great things, and I certainly hope that the school system also will highlight the positive things that our young people are doing. We are very, very proud of them. So, I say to our community, yes, by all means, do not stop praying. Yes, by all means, see something, say something. Let the law enforcement officers know. And as we pray for our city, that includes everybody in it, but we pray for God's children everywhere, and we remember that police officers, first responders, they have families too, so they're going through as well as those on the front line. So, let's remember that. So, in terms of what can one say, what can one do, one can pray, one can see something, say something, one can encourage someone, and one can remember, you know, you look at Maslow Theory, how if you need, you talk about the eight basic needs in life, the eight basic needs in life. Number one, or one of the eight, people need to be listened to. People want someone to listen to them. So, let's all of us, that includes me, talk less, listen more, and be encouraging and supportive when we can. And remember, there is more good in this city than bad, than bad. Thank you.
Mr. Shanks.
Uh, yes, I just have two or three items. First of all, Councilman Saunders has always said, if we all thought alike, then we didn't need each other, we'd just, we'd just be one body that acted unanimously. Well, I, I was going to bring this up after the meeting, but since it was brought up, I think if we're going to have rules that dictate how long people are allowed to talk, and I'm sorry, being mayor's tough, but you're it, if you're going to have the rules, you can't selectively choose who can keep talking, because I can just see other groups coming in here and just using that argument. So, I, I was, I did not, I enjoyed or appreciated what was being said, but I think if you're going to have rules, and if we need to lengthen the time people can talk, that's fine, too. If you'll remember, I was against the rule to begin with, but if you're going to have a rule, it needs enforced, or it needs, if you don't like the shortness of the rule, the rule needs changed. The most important thing I learned tonight, though, was, was the report by the chief, and I think there's some meat and potatoes in that report, more so than in previous reports, and I think the most important thing is on page two of his written response, is the partnerships that have been aligned in a short period of time, and it, it, the partnerships are an acknowledgement by the city that we need help, and it's acknowledgement by other agencies that we need help, and they're all agreeing, both parties are agreeing to work together to try to eliminate or deter the problem that's in, in front of us. But just, just let me emphasize. Virginia State Police Drug Task Force, FBI Safe Streets Task Force, United States Marshal Fugitive Task Force, Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives, and then three or four additional partnerships with the Virginia State Police. I think that needs to be relayed clearly to the public, needs relayed clearly to those who are potential misbehaviors, and I think it's going to be a real deterrent, and I'm expecting real, real success in reducing the crime. And lastly, the, I, in my backyard, I'm beginning to get radishes and zucchini and yellow squash and broccoli, so you better believe the community market, the farmers' market on Saturday is going to have boatloads of locally grown vegetables, I'd encourage everybody to take a look on Saturday. Thank you.
Just a few points. The first, I have a, a couple of quick questions for the city manager, if you could, and if not, we can, I can get the information later, hopefully, but there's a lot of talk in the community about it, and I've seen stories and news stories, and sometimes the information was conflicting, and so, if possible, we can get the, the proper information tonight in regards to the fire department and fire station study that is being looked at. I got two different questions, but I'll do them one at a time and give you a chance to answer before I go on, but the, the study that is being talked about, is there a cost of that study, and if so, what is roughly the cost of the study?
There's no cost at this point. What I, what I plan to do is ask staff to put together data that we can look at to see if there, if it makes even any sense to go further at that point.
So, no consultant or anything has been hired or even discussed being hired at this point?
No, it's just something I plan on working with staff on, just to get the data, get the information.
Actually, Councilman Vogler, we discussed that in the work session, and we pretty much, I thought counsel agreed that we would not spend any money toward that study, that we, it would be done in-house.
That was, that was my thought also, but I've heard, I, I just want to make sure that that information is being relayed to the public tonight, because I've heard conflicting things in the time since, and, but yes, that was my recollection as well. Well, I guess I, I don't have a follow-up question then for the city manager, thank you for, for clarifying that. Real briefly, and I don't want to talk too much about it, because I know Councilman Buckner will probably want to talk about it, but this past weekend was, was a tremendous weekend in a lot of ways for the City of Danville, in that we had Valid Brewing opened on Friday, and I think they had, I'd say easily hundreds, if not thousands, of people go through there in the weekend. And then Saturday, it was all kinds of events, the food truck rodeo that Councilman Buckner was instrumental in making happen this past weekend was a fantastic success for the City of Danville, for the region. I can't tell you how many people I came across on Saturday afternoon who were in Danville for the weekend or for the day, who were from out of town and were in here, spending money and, and going to the businesses and going around, going to concert that night. Fantastic job, Councilman Buckner and everybody else who, who worked to make that happen. All kinds of good things happened this past weekend, and so, in that regard, we saw a lot of the best of Danville this past weekend. Back in December in this chamber, I spoke about the two Danvilles that exist, and while we just talked about the good things that have happened earlier tonight, we've talked about some of the things that are not good, and some of the things we are struggling with. And I always believe it's important to highlight the positives that we're doing, but we must continue to recognize the struggles that we face. And I don't want to rehash what I said earlier, but I do want to reiterate, now is the time to step up, everybody, every single person in this city can find something that they can do to help. Be that light, be that light in the darkness, and be that positive influence in somebody's life. You have no idea how much of a positive impact that that can make, and how much of a difference it can make in our community. We got a young man who
I'll continue to pray for our city, our counsel, and our nation. Thank you.
Mr. Buckner.
Yeah, a couple of months back, I had the privilege of working with Time Machine's Car Club and finding a new location for their monthly cruise in here in the City of Danville. They used to do it on Main Street. We were able to go to the IDA and discuss a plan to have them use the Acre Warehouse beside of Golden Leaf Bistro on Craghead Street. It's actually access from Bridge Street, across from the old fire department. Their cruise in is this Saturday night, and it's going to be a great time, guaranteed. Come down, check out some really, really nice rides. That's every second Saturday through September, so come on down, check that out, you will not be let down, it's a great time. Like to congratulate Ballad Brewing for a solid opening. It was a great time, all of everybody that came out, it was just, just an out-of-this-world experience. It was really fun. And thank you, Mr. Vogler, for the kind words on the food truck rodeo this weekend. I'd like to thank everybody that came out and supported it. There were 14 trucks, and 10 of the 14 sold completely out of food by 5:30 or 6 o'clock. So, they were all very happy, and you can look for them again soon. It was a late night down there picking up trash, moving tables, taking down tents, but all well worth it. I hope you all just be on the lookout for the next one. Thank you very much, Mayor. Yeah, we'll try to get some healthier choices then, Dr. Miller. Yes, sir. Turkey dogs up for everybody.
Reverend Camp.
Thank you, very shortly. It's always good to see Bishop Linder here and the work they do in the community. I want to ditto what Councilman Sherman Saunders said and others. You hit it right on the point. We are at a crucial stage in our community, and it saddens me, it really hurts my heart to see what has happened the last few days. And I pray to God that what has been stated tonight by the city manager and the chief of police will be able to stop the violence in our community and the shootings. And I pray that those individuals who have a spirit of retaliation, that this would not happen, because you will be caught. We have a great city, we have a great city, and we need to promote the good things in our community and not the bad things. And I'm so happy to see, as was stated, what was in the papers on Sunday, we need to continue that, because it does have a spirit with that and has an impact upon our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Gilstrap.
I would like to first pass these out to counsel. I was requested to do so, and I will gladly do that. And what I'm passing out is this coming Sunday, June 11th, at Carrington Pavilion, is Engage Danville. It is a festival that celebrates our city, and there will be rides for kids, games, food, and all sorts of activities. And, Councilman, I do have one change. I emailed each of you requesting that you participate, and we maybe will be called to the stage at 5 o'clock. They had a schedule and conflicts, but please change your calendar, it's going to be 5 o'clock. And at that time, it's a great opportunity for us to listen to the citizens. Someone mentioned that earlier. I think Councilman Saunders mentioned that we should listen. This would be a great opportunity for us to have that, listen to our residents. Also, Friday night, Roots of Segregation, High Street, presented by the History United, 6:30. Please, you can, I believe you can go online and see how to RSVP to that, but I think that would be another opportunity for us to listen. I have a question for the city attorney. When we invite all these councilmen, we have more than two, we got to notify media, or is that just an event we attend?
This is just an event you're attending because you're not discussing public business, that you're...
Okay. Well, if there's any media listening, there'll be more than two of us there Friday night, and there'll be more than two of us there Sunday. My sincere condolences to the families and friends of those young people whose life was taken. It's tragic. Also tragic was the three-year-old that lost her life because a TV fell off of a shelf. My heart just crushed for the loss of a youth life. So, let's remember all those and their friends and families in our prayers. And let me close by simply saying that, Danville, we can resolve our problems, but the residents have to be involved. You have to help us resolve them. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.